Commissioner Cox.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, after God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our invocation, which will be led by Michael Smith, Administrator Pastor of the Franklin Avenue Church of God. That's a mouthful.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your grace, your mercy, and your blessings. Father, we realize it comes from you, and we thank you for them. Father, we ask you to touch the mayor and the city commission and the city officials as they go through the process each week, each other, every other week, to make decisions for this city. We pray, God, that you'll give them knowledge beyond themselves, that they will do things that will be good for this city and, God, that will bring you glory. I ask you to guide their every thought, their every word, and their every deed, that ultimately bring you glory. And I pray, Father, everyone, for the sound of my voice, be ready for that day that Jesus Christ returns. God, thank you again for who you are and for your blessings on this city in the name of Jesus.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, we will now call this meeting to order. I'm not used to seeing daylight out the door. And so it's a different having a morning meeting. I would do want to excuse Commissioner Josh Inoff this morning. He is supposedly going to be out of state. He doesn't know where his wife's taking him. He just knows it's south. So we literally don't know the rest of it.
He doesn't either.
He doesn't either. He's along for the ride. So item two, minutes of the May sixth, twenty twenty five special meeting at four thirty in our regular five thirty P. M. Meetings. Is there a motion?
Probably.
Motion by Commissioner Cox. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tooley. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by a like sign? Motion carries. Item three, departmental and agency report. A through S. That's a lot of reports, Jordan. Anyone have anything you'd like to lift out there? Any item? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the departmental and agency reports. So my motion by Commissioner Throde. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tooley. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed by a like sign? Motion carries. Item four, informational items. And as I say every meeting, that's exactly what it is. It's for information only. All right, we're going to move straight out of this into our work session, which the Honorable Gregory Elkins is with us this morning, our state senator, who's doing a fantastic job for this community and accessible, always here for us. Answer your phone, call us back. You do all those things that a good legislator should do. And we're happy to have you here this morning and just to hear what you have to say.
Thank you for, thank you for having me. I appreciate you guys putting up with me covering your legislative update. As you know, we finished the last session. So as each session completes, I like to get in front of many local government entities that I can and talk about what we did during session and answer questions. It is important to me that you and the public know what we do with transparency has always been accessibility and transparency have always been two of the highest priorities. For me, even when I was in my district, and especially now that I'm a state senator. So all of my committees changed, well, most of my committees changed from last session to this session. I remain state local. I was actually named vice chair of state local government committee, which to me, local control was very important. So I was proud to stay on that committee. I was assigned to natural resources and energy, which aligns with my expertise and background. Banking and insurance is another committee, and transportation, which is a committee that is very important to me in this district and working on our roads and other transportation issues that we have in this district. So I was very pleased with those committees. I was also assigned to the co-chair of the Legislative Oversight Investigative Committee. So that's a little interesting for me. And issues and topics that we're going to take up in the interim, probably one of the first topics we'll take up is the foster care, child care, kinship care issues going on in the state. I think that's pretty important, and I've requested that be on our first meeting, which will be in June, that we take that issue up. So some of the things I want to talk to you about, one thing is that renovations at the Capitol. You have until the end of this month, which is just a few more days to tour the Capitol building if you would want to. Anybody who wants to go to or still can, but it's going to close the end of this month. And the Capitol building will be closed completely, where you're not accessible. The governor's moving out, Lieutenant Governor, the General Assembly, everybody's leaving the Capitol building. And it's going to be closed for, they say, four years. And we know in government time, that means six years. No way it isn't going to be done. The original cost estimate for that, those improvements was two hundred million dollars, but it was double, no doubt, go to four hundred million or more.
Wow.
A half billion before it's done. What they found was, and a few years ago, trees were growing around the dome. So as they inspected further, they found the dome was actually about to fall in on the building. The building is over a hundred years old, right at a hundred years old. Never had any real improvements done to it. So it's been neglected, and we're paying the cost for it now. One of the bills that was passed that would very important piece of legislation, in my opinion, the most important piece of legislation we passed is yours, House Bill one. What House Bill one did was it reduced our income tax from four percent to three point five percent, January one, twenty twenty six. Our goal is to get our income tax to zero. And so we have, we have trained it that way for the past several years, and I hope we continue to do so. There are triggers set in place, so we don't just jump off the cliff like some states have done and then have to back up and say, well, that didn't work. We actually are the model for the United States. A lot of other states who want to get to zero are coming to Kentucky and saying, how did you do this? Why did you do it this way? And so they're going back to their stage modeling their income tax legislation after hours. So it's a very thoughtful piece of legislation. And it is working, has so far, and I think it will continue to work. Some of the other bills that we passed were economic development bills, on Starborough House Bill six oh five, which is a grant application. It amends the government resources accelerating needed transformation program to assist local governments in leveraging federal. So what it is, it's a matching, we do it with state funds now. You get a state grant, you can match with, I think it was House Bill nine from twenty twenty, February twenty twenty three. This will expand that and allow you to leverage federal funds the same way. So you can still use those funds, or you can now use those funds to leverage against federal funds. House Bill six oh six allows both the governments in two or more counties entering into an interlocal agreement for development of real estate. And we've seen that here. Commerce Lex has a project in maybe Rockfish County, where they have combined with Scott, Fayette, and Prodded Castle. Madison maybe as well. And they've developed a local industrial development project there. And now they're looking east on sixty fours. And they've not actually said it. They haven't, they haven't come out and said it yet, but they're looking at Fayette, Carr, Montgomery, maybe even Bad County going in, just some sort of local agreement. And what you'll be allowed to do is you'll be allowed to collaborate or to work together with other, use other counties and cities to develop this project. It will require that a local board be established to manage the affairs of the district. It requires it to report every year to the D O G. And it let, it allows those districts to levy occupational tax or abhorrent tax in that district. So it, and it establishes a restriction on local governments that you can't also collect those same taxes in that district. You can still continue to collect that same district, those taxes, funding that district. So it's going to be kind of a standalone, but it should help the community. Had some housing built, as you know, housing was another big topic for us in Frankfurt. House Bill one sixty allows for more manufactured housing. As we know, we've seen manufactured housing change over the years. It used to be manufactured housing with a trailer. And so it's no longer that anymore. You can walk in some of these manufactured homes, and you can't tell the difference in one that has been built from the ground up in place. So it relaxes some of the restrictions on manufactured housing and allows more of that to be put in our, in our economy, which will help on the on the affordable housing issue. House Bill three twenty one extended the time for planning commissioners and board of adjustment members when they're appointed. It expands the time for their orientation training, which allows it a little easier to appoint planning commission members or judgment members because that restriction of having to be trained, and I think it was sixty days, if I'm not mistaken, made it, made it a little difficult for a lot of people who would have been on the planning commissioner or local judgment to receive that training. And it extends that over now they can go up to a year after their appointment. Senate Bill twenty five expands the definition of eligible projects for industrial revenue bond financing. And it includes residential multifamily homes now that will produce more than forty eight or more units. So you can now use the industrial revenue bond financing for some of these projects as well. That will help builders to finance and pay for some of those projects. The law enforcement bill that we took up, House Bill ten establishes a procedure for property owners to submit a petition to law enforcement officers to remove squatters, a person who is unlawfully occupying real estate property. The bill declares what a squatter is, and it creates a criminal penalty for that squatter to deface or to destroy, damage.
The bill defines, defines the term.
Does define who a squatter is, what a squatter is, and it tells exactly how to remove one. It allows law enforcement officers to go remove them now. Because we've had, not in Winchester that I know of, but in some places we've had, so, I mean, we've had squatters to be sure in Winchester, but it's not been a real issue like it has been in Girken County or Fayette County, where people are moving in and saying, we're not leaving, we're going to stay.
I read a thing day before yesterday, that lady came home from vacation, and there was a family living in her house, and it took her two years to get out.
I read one, I read one, Shannon, Commissioner Cox, I read one where a person came home and found his water in their home, and he just moved in with it and made it so uncomfortable when they left. But that was how he got them.
I'd have a heart attack, so it wouldn't matter.
Yeah. It's a real issue. So I think that that bill will certainly go with that. House Bill five twenty excludes law enforcement records from open records. When the law enforcement agency determines that it is a danger to their informant or to the investigation if they release those records. So if you have an active investigation going on and you're using an informant, we've seen cases where people did an open record request, found out who the informant was, and they put it on page. Here's the informant. So that really makes it hard for a law enforcement officer to use an informant, knowing that they could be outed, I guess you could say like that. So this bill restricts that. It was a bill that we took a lot of heat from, a lot of blackboard, because everybody portrays that as reducing transparency. And it actually increasing safety, because it allows law enforcement officers to conduct good investigations, which is what we need them to do. And so I didn't look at it as a reducing transparency bill. Actually, this is the only time I ever changed it. I voted against this bill in committee and then changed my mind as I heard more testimony and changed my mind to a yes vote, so it could pass through. And had I not done that, Bill would have died in black. It's an important bill, I think, and I'm pleased and okay that I changed that vote. As we all know, sometimes the time we get voted remorse. I have had that as well. House Bill six twenty two amends the budget to reimburse local school districts, corrupt to twenty thousand dollars for an S R O in a facility. Those of you that know me know I never, ever publicly criticized the governor for the decision he made. We have philosophical differences, but I understand he has a tough job, so I don't criticize him. But he used his line of veto to veto out those funds for private schools. So that twenty thousand dollars can go to public schools, but he vetoed the private school section of that, said, no, we're not going to spend those funds for private schools. And to me, I thought that was a really bad decision to say that private school children aren't as important, their protection or their safety isn't as important as public school children. I think it was, I think it was a mistake. I think it was a tactical error that he made, and I hope we come back next session and change that. This bill was passed, as you know, in the last two days of session, so it was not eligible for the override. It was a bill that everybody thought was safe for vetoing, that, you know, we just didn't think that bill would be vetoed. It was. So I'm taking into task for that decision and will continue to do so. Hope he would change it. I don't know if he can now, but I hope we change it next session if it's voted again. And get that funding in private schools as well, because I think every school child should be prepared for vice school resource also. It's just, it's important. It has no doubt improved the safety of our public schools, and I think it would of private, there does of private schools as well. But private schools now continue to have to pay for it. And, you know, part of his, part of his thought was, well, there are private schools, that we shouldn't use public funds for that. But people who have their children in private schools still pay the school tax. They still pay the tax to the state, so they're still paying for private, public school and private school. So it's fair to help them with that twenty thousand dollar reimbursement. Some election bills that we took up. House Bill four fifty five creates a unit of elections investigation and security within the attorney general's office. So it allows him to hire investigators to investigate complaints from election officials or other people who feel that they witnessed some election fraud or violations of the law in elections. They will review those complaints, conduct investigations, and they'll have the power to issue subpoenas and take sworn statements. And then they'll submit an annual report to the Legislative Research Commission so that we and the General Assembly can review that and see if there's more laws that need to be changed or, or nothing done at all. And then I believe in Kentucky, we have some of the safest, most fair, free elections anywhere in the United States. I think we've done outstanding job here in protecting our election integrity. Just, you know, you'll hear complaints and things that happen, but very rarely do we actually find that something really has happened. People sometimes they think they've seen something before, or they believe something and find out, no, it's believable, it's going to actually. I'm pleased with our elections in Kentucky, but I do think we continue, we should continue to try to make them better. So that brings me to House Bill six eighty four, which does several things. It removes the ability to use credit cards or debit cards as a form of identification to vote, and no longer use those two things, the form of identification to vote. It allows caregivers to cash an excused in-person ballot for voters who fall out or excuse in-person voting. And I think that's a good idea too. Because some folks should still be able to vote, but can't. Well, our caregivers do that for them. Requires video surveillance and ballot drop boxes to have enough storage capacity for sixty consecutive days. Again, to protect election integrity. Other noteworthy legislation pieces, with Senate Bill two oh two, that was the cannabis infused drinks bill. We call it weed water, and I've never heard that term before this session. I didn't know weed water was. Apparently, some legislators had heard of weed water and took several cans of this to the University of Kentucky and assessed it for the amount of cannabis in these drinks. And there's supposed to be five parts per million or milligrams per liter, that's what it was, five milligrams per liter in these drinks. And some of them had more than a hundred milligram per liter in them. So people were able to drink one drink and get stoned off of it. And they were failing C D L tests and drug tests to get them drinking this water. So, and some of them had no, they had nothing on the labels at all to tell them which cannabis was in these drinks. So we've put some restrictions on weed water, you call it, or cannabis, and you drink. It can now be no longer than five parts per, five milligram per liter, and it must tell you on the can, that's one milligram per liter, two or five. It can't be, can't be more than five. House Joint Resolution thirty released sixty five point six million dollars in twenty twenty five and twenty one point six million dollars in twenty twenty six for the A W Waters Act. And that's the act that helps local governments with their sewer and their water project that they may have. So it's not nearly enough. I think we had more than two hundred million dollars in requests, fifty one million dollars, but it's just definitely the right direction. House Bill three fifteen restricts certain foreign entities from owning or leasing agricultural land in Commonwealth Kentucky. That's countries that are on certain lists that we may have can no longer buy or lease land in Kentucky, agricultural land in Kentucky, that is. Senate Bill twenty five establishes the Medicaid Oversight and Advisory Committee in the General Assembly. The board will review, analyze, study, evaluate, provide legislative oversight, and make recommendations to the General Assembly that pertain to the Kentucky Medicaid programs. We all know the federal government is tightening their belt a bit, so this gets very plausible and almost probable, I would say, to see some touch Medicaid funding from the federal government, and we're going to have to make that up in one way or another in the Commonwealth, and every state is struggling with this. Some states have actually called special sessions to come back in and figure out how to deal with it. We passed a Medicaid bill. We put a work requirement on Medicaid. So that will help. It's not nearly going to be enough. It's a very small mandate, almost could be a open gash, I guess you would say. But it's something we're going to have to deal with, and that's one we're looking at dealing with it. Senate Bill sixty five is a Chevron deference bill that affirmed the Supreme Court decision, a Chevron deference, which tells agencies, like divisional order, divisional wage, whichever it may be. It tells local courts that you can no longer defer to the, to the agency to tell you what the law is. You must defer to the legislature because we're elected officials. We're the ones that are accountable for those laws. We're the ones that we voted in and out. Those agency people cannot. So they were establishing and creating laws. So this Supreme Court decision says they can no longer do that. Judges must defer to the General Assembly or to Congress. And I think that's a very good piece of legislation. Senate Bill eighty nine falls in line with what I said, or I think this short session did, if we took a lot of these agencies, not took them to task, we reeled them back in, where they were getting out from their skis just a bit. Senate Bill eighty nine was the Waterways Act. Probably got more emails on this piece of legislation than any that I got this session. And it was the one that told Kentucky Divisional Order that you must dial back your definition of waterways to match the federal EPA's definition. We were actually much more stringent than the federal EPA. The federal EPA wasn't as stringent as we were, but a Supreme Court decision, Plackett versus EPA, said, no, no, you've gotten out too far. You've gone beyond the nineteen seventy two Clean Water Act intention in your decision of what jurisdiction we're agreeing with. So the federal EPA said, okay, we're going to come back and do what the Supreme Court told us to do. Kentucky never did that. Kentucky stayed out there where they were. So we said, no, you're going to have to come back and do what the federal government says to do. House Joint Resolution fifteen was a bill that I carried on Senate floor. It allowed the Ten Commandments monument that was given to the Commonwealth of Kentucky in nineteen seventy by the paternal order of repeals to be brought back to the Capitol grounds and placed on the Capitol grounds. It'll be a monument, restored monument of the Ten Commandments back on the Capitol ground. Very proud of carrying up this legislation. There's some legislation that failed. Centralized collection of occupational tax. I know that's one that was a concern to you guys, and that piece of legislation failed. I did not support that and never did. There were a couple of bills actually that came about that removed local control. And I stood against all of those, and I think, well, K L C is much more powerful than I am. But with them, I think we, we got all of those bills that I know corrected. I don't think it removed much local control, give any from local government, and I'm very proud of that. Short-term rental regulations that failed, that was designed to, City of Louisville had gotten out in front of some of the short-term rental regulations. So there was a bill brought about that was going to require certain requirements, I hope we know that. Dealing with the air D and B issues and all that. So that bill failed. Famities to the jails where the cities would pay the counties for the jails. That bill failed. That bill's been introduced several times. It's failed every time. Legal publications, which says you don't have to put your announcements in the county and city newspapers. That bill failed. I'm very much opposed to that because I think that is one of the things that keeps a lot of our local newspapers up and running. It's the element, no decision we have to put in the papers. It's a source of revenue for them. So I oppose that piece of legislation. And my school bus safety bill failed, and I will bring that back and push that again next year because it's a good piece of legislation. It made it all the way to the House and died without a vote. It made it even through the House committee, but it's not going to House floor. I'll bring it back. There were some amendments attached to it that made it a not great bill. And so with the amendments that were attached, I was kind of okay that it failed. I love what I wanted the bill to do and what I designed it to do, but someone else had some different ideas about what they thought it ought to do as well. And so it made it not as good a bill, so it failed.
What did you want the bill to do?
So what my bill, what my bill said was that it establishes a criminal penalty right now to violate this. What it does is it allows school districts to charge, to assess penalties. They'll pay for cameras on the stop arm. So if someone violates the stop arm, and stop arms out and they run it, there'll be a camera on the school buses, and the school district can pay for those cameras through penalties. Currently, there's a two hundred dollar penalty, and all that penalty stays in the court system, the whole two hundred dollars. This would have added three hundred dollars to it, and it would have been a five hundred dollar penalty for violating that stop arm. If you go on YouTube or any of your social media posts and you type in stop arm violations and look at some of these kids near misses getting hit, I mean, it's terrifying.
Many have died without paying, having people pay attention to that stop arm.
That's right.
Shannon and I, we were both educators, and we know getting those kids on the bus, it's, it's tough.
Study that was done that found that there are really over a hundred, now this is an estimate, but there are over a hundred violations of a stop arm in state parks every single day.
We had an issue, I guess it's last year, actually, in Lexington Avenue, right in the area of the cemetery, and I got many calls on that one.
Well, there was, there was a study done, I think last year, there were maybe, I can't remember the number now, but it's like a hundred and forty actual citations that were issued and processed, made it through the system out of over, that's what it was, over eight thousand violations last year, and only a hundred and forty two of them, I think, were penalized. Because there's no proof, it's impossible. Because there's no proof, it's impossible proof.
It's just the bus driver's word against.
Exactly.
But having driven a bus back when I first started to teach and Don Pacey would say, hey, I need to drive this left route this week. Leave the bus at school in the morning and go teach and go get on the bus in the afternoon, drive, drive it around, but. I think a hundred a day is probably way low.
Yep, it's an estimate.
Be, because I guarantee you, when I was. Right, well, when I would drive every day for a week, at least twice a week. Somebody come around.
As I was giving the statistics to both the Sen- the Senate Committee and the, the House Committee. I could see jaws drop when I would talk about the number of times it's estimated this is violated, and just as you said. The school bus drivers say, that's luck, that's not, because I didn't, I didn't want to exaggerate. I wanted to use something that I could affirm, or if I get up, I stayed with.
And having driven teams around to football games and baseball games, stuff like that. Folks, it's worse in the country than it is in town.
So that, Shannon, you hit on that, what I, what I said was, a lot of, uh, like Fayette County, Jefferson County, they can afford to pay for the stop arm.
Yeah.
Many of these banks, Bad County cannot. Now, we've had some stop arm cameras in Clark County, but not all. This bill would attach a three hundred dollar additional penalty to the fine, and that three hundred dollars comes back to the school district. And must be used to pay for stop arms and stop arm storage, so you can store the data. And it had restrictions on it where you could only keep the data for thirty days unless there was a penalty in place, and you could store it longer. A lot of things like that, so the bill that, uh, my, I presented would create a criminal penalty. Which meant it still all went through the court system and everything was done on the up and up, and it should be. And the school district couldn't exaggerate and find people that weren't actually violating the stop arm. Uh, the amendment made it a civil penalty, which took it out of the court system and allowed school resource officers to actually assess the penalty. And, and of course, the payment of, so. That was, uh, that was, I looked at it both ways, um, thought about it both ways, criminal pen- criminal penalty was the way to go. I talked to Mark Metcalf at the Treasurer's Office. When he was fine with collecting those and, and distributing to the districts that they belonged in, he said, we can do that, we can create the software to make that happen. So I knew that was one of the questions, how are you gonna get to the, to the school district where the penalty took collection? So I talked to the Treasurer's Office, and he got on board with it and said he would work to establish the, uh. The software that was needed, uh, and program to make that process possible, so.
When the time comes, if you need a letter of support from this body.
I appreciate that. That's, that's educators, yes, I think that will be, could be very helpful. I'm going to follow again next year, so we'll stay in touch on that. Um, that's all I have for you today. We had, we did come back, they linked the governor to veto. I've heard two different numbers, twenty-nine and thirty-nine, it's the last two days legislation, so I can't count, I lost count, I was so tired, but, uh. E- either way, we came back and overrode all the vetoes except that one that was not eligible for an override. Uh, that we talked about earlier about the public, private school, uh, S R O, school resource officer. So it was a good session, um, I think we stayed in our lane, you know, we all know the short session is designed to not take on big. You know, big, one big beautiful building, you call it, and not what a short session for a short session is to. We could change things that may be amended and fix pieces of legislation, and I think we did, for the most part, we did that. There were a couple of issues came up like the Medicaid bill that we had to take down and do some work on, because we saw things coming. We left a hundred million dollars in the disaster budget. I'd say that a lot of that's going to get eaten up over this, uh, terrible storms that we've had in London and Somerset.
And the floods earlier in February?
Yeah, the, the floods were already funded, there was an additional hundred million, and we, we did fund the flood relief as well. But then we put an additional hundred million in a budget that said the governor could use for disaster relief. Oh, I didn't, you know, we continue to see these storms in Kentucky, uh, that we've seen like in May field. They're just seem to be getting worse and worse, so I don't know how we're gonna deal with that. I know there was a patchwork bill that was floated to establish a faster patchwork to study some of these issues. You're never gonna, you know, stop tornadoes or guide them, but maybe we're rebuilding houses and floods on some of that issue, so that. I, I think that's going to come back again next year. I think we'll probably establish a tax for it, we'll get some of that as well in the very near future. I would predict that, to, we continue to have more natural disasters in Kentucky. But with that, thank you for your time, and I'll be glad to take any questions if anybody has any.
Commissioners?
I, I got one.
Yes, sir.
Except for the budget. What's, what's gonna be the next, the, uh, the, uh, the second? Biggest thing, your prediction that's gonna be brought up in the General Assembly?
Um, I think we will continue to work on education issues, uh. Public education issues, um, I think we'll continue to work on housing issues. That's probably gonna be the two biggest. I'm, I'm hoping that we can go away from so much of the social. Just issues, which would say, I'm a policy guy, that's what I like. Shannon, that's a good question, you know, you never know what's coming up that's going to surprise you in sessions. We'll spend a lot of time on the road plan as well. Development roads, I was on the phone this morning to WMU about the bypass, set up a meeting with WMU and District Seven. So we can get out in front of the infrastructure issues, we'll go with that, that's important to me.
I've, I've, I've talked about that from the first day I heard about it. Let, let, because part of what's wrong with the other part.
No infrastructure.
No infrastructure.
I say all the time, you may have heard me say it, you can build a road across the desert, and when you're done, you've got a road across the desert.
That's right.
If you put water, sewer, and electricity along it.
They shall come, they will come.
When, when we've got a church on the new bypass that has a. Spectic tank.
Yep.
Well, uh, uh, we know we did something wrong.
Yeah, that's exactly right, so, uh, WMU reached out to me this morning, uh, and they're, uh, they want, they. Have seen the survey going on, and, and I have been told that we'll be actually buying right away by the end of the year. You guys know I'm, that was one of the reasons I was frankly pushing that front end, so. Uh, I have pushed, continued to push, so.
Appreciate it.
Buying right away by the end of the year, and WMU reached out, and they want to get a, an infrastructure perv, and I said, I'm all for it, I'll get District Seven there.
While you, while you got the hole in the ground, you may as well put pipe energy.
Exactly right, it's never cheaper, there's never a cheaper time to do it, while you got the hole in the ground, that's right.
Well, Senator, we want to thank you for coming this morning, and also want to thank you seriously from the bottom of our hearts for being the Senator you are for us.
Well, thank you.
Means a lot. I know you've been in this week and spent over an hour and a half just going over projects and seeing where you could help. And that's really critical for our, to advance and go forward, we need, we need people in our corner.
Yeah, I, I like knowing what you need, when I get product, you know, always deliver, but if I don't know you need it, I'm never.
Right.
So if you're very, very good, we have those quarterly meetings, I'm thankful we do it, I'm happy we do it, but. And I'm happy to do this, to say, I know you guys are tired, you've been dealing with budget issues, I know it's a worst time of the year. To be doing these things, but it's, it's when it's still fresh on my mind, so it's a good time to do it, I appreciate you allowing me to do it today.
Well, we support you as you support us, and we appreciate you very much.
And, and if I might say, Mayor, and. Been friends with RJ and Ralph before you, and, and Ryan and Donna. In the other chamber. At, from an effectiveness level, you are a ten. I'm not gonna compare you to them, but I will say from an effectiveness and effectiveness level. You are a ten.
Thank you, Shannon, I appreciate it, I, I came into this job with big shoes, Phil, so I know how to work, I'm doing it. That's what I've tried to do.
We wanna.
I love doing it.
You do. And we want to recognize your lovely wife, Kim, that's with you this morning. You would not be where you are today if it were not for that, so.
Same thing, season, I, I come home from work, be tired, and she said, get your walk, and she.
You're going, get up, buddy.
That's, that's how it works.
She is.
Kim and I from the same spot on the planet.
Thank you, Senator, so much. Kim, good to have you with us today.
Appreciate you.
Okay, let's go to item six, ordinances. These are for second reading, and they will all require voice votes. So our city clerk, if you want to start with six A, B, and then C.
This is a summary, an ordinance annexing to the city of Winchester, Kentucky. Certain land in Clark County, Kentucky, identified as all that certain tract of parcel of land. Lying and being in Clark County, Kentucky, being thirty-one point eight one eight acres, more or less. Situated on the southwestern side of the corporate limits of the city of Winchester, Kentucky. A complete copy of this ordinance may be viewed in the city clerk's office at City Hall thirty-two Wall Street. I hereby certify that the foregoing is an accurate summary of the contents of the above titled ordinance, William A. Dyckman, city attorney.
Is there a motion?
Followed.
Motion by Commissioner Cox, is there a second? Second, by Commissioner Strode, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Voice vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Strode.
Aye.
Mayor Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Cox.
Yes.
Commissioner Tool.
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Okay, six B.
This is a summary, an ordinance annexing to the city of Winchester, Kentucky, certain land in Clark County, Kentucky. Identified as all that certain tract or parcel of land, lying and being in Clark County, Kentucky, being four point two two five acres, more or less. Situated on the southwestern side of the corporate limits of the city of Winchester, Kentucky. Full copy of this ordinance can be reviewed at the city clerk's office thirty-two Wall Street. I hereby certify that the foregoing is an accurate summary of the contents of the above titled ordinance, William A. Dyckman, city attorney.
Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Tool, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Strode, any discussion? Voice vote, please.
Commissioner Strode.
Yes.
Commissioner, sorry, Mayor Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Cox.
Yep.
Commissioner Tool.
Yes. Uh, six C.
Uh, an ordinance approving the change of zoning classification of attractive land containing twenty-three point five one five acres, more or less. Located at thirty-three fifteen Colby Road, Winchester, Kentucky, from agricultural A-one zoning to planned development P D zoning. Complete copy of this ordinance may be reviewed at the office of the city clerk thirty-two Wall Street, Winchester, Kentucky. Kentucky during normal business hours, I hereby certify that the foregoing is an accurate summary of the contents of the above titled ordinance, William A. Dyckman, city attorney.
Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Tool, second by Commissioner Strode, any discussion? Voice vote, please.
Commissioner Strode.
Yes.
Mayor Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Cox.
Yes.
Commissioner Tool.
Yes. Motion carries. Item seven, orders, and these are general orders, Madam Clerk, A and B. In, uh, Commissioner Cox, when we get to B, you will need to recuse yourself.
B or C?
Uh, technically, it is C on your agenda, but it's supposed to be B, because A and B on your agenda are the same thing.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Sorry.
I see, my fault.
I was looking, say.
We see, I'll scratch it.
An order accepting the bid of Kentucky River foothills in the amount of ten thousand dollars and transferring property owned by the city of Winchester.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Tool, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Strode, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed by a like sign, motion carries, item seven B, will you state the reason you're recusing?
Uh, I'm on the habitats for humanity board, and this involves the habitat redevelopment. Project on Lincoln Street.
Thank you, Commissioner, we'll let you know soon as we're finished here, uh, seven B.
An order approving a contract of sale between the city of Winchester, Kentucky, and Rodney Butler. For property located at seventeen Lincoln Street for the purpose of the Lincoln Street C D B G redevelopment project phase two.
Is there a motion, so, motion by Commissioner Strode, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tool, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed by a like sign, motion carries. Please, do you mind bringing him back, please? Not in handcuffs, just. I told not to bring you back in handcuffs, Shannon. All right, item eight, personnel orders, item eight A.
An order accepting the resignation of Carrie Rivera, H R Director.
I will make that motion with regret. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Strode, any discussion? I want to say, Carrie, thank you for the service that you've given to the city. You've brought us a long way in H R, and it's much appreciated, and Godspeed to you. Okay, is there, do we get a second?
Yeah, motion and a second. Motion and a second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed by a like sign, motion carries, item eight B.
An order accepting the, wait a minute, nevermind. Already done, an order granting longevity salary increases to certain personnel.
Is there a motion, so, motion by Commissioner Strode, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Tool, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed by a like sign, motion carries, item eight C.
An order reclassifying Earl Johnson, Luke Neltner, and Kyle Tate.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Tool, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Strode, any discussion? All in favor, aye? Any opposed by a like sign, motion carries, item eight D.
An order accepting the resignation of David Barnett, crossing guard.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Tool, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Strode, any discussion? I do want to say, there's gonna be a job opening there, if any of you all feel inclined to be a crossing guard, we'd love to have you, so. Big bucks, right? We, we gotta keep our kids safe, the Senator just said, so, is there a motion?
You have a motion and a second.
Second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed by a like sign, motion carries, eight E.
An order granting educational certification incentive salary increases to certain personnel.
Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Strode, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Tool, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed by a like sign? Okay, item nine, comments from the general public. And let's see, Madam Clerk, you just gave me Whitney Fuller. Is that all that you're showing?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Old, if you'll come forward and.
I, I didn't know there was some.
Showed, he did show up late.
Yeah, I don't know about him. Now, you want to let Whitney, you've signed up, so you come on, then we'll let Adam speak. You make a note. Morning.
Starts the company that has probably served Winchester for the past ten years. Throughout this decade, we consistently met all the obligations, which we commonly paid at the business license fees and related permits. Uh, recent developments have prompted me to raise our concerns regarding the current fee structure and its impact on businesses like ours. I received my renewal letter from the city for a business license in April. I called to ask what I owe, what's it on there, and I was gonna mail it in, and it was told I didn't pay last year's fee. Um, I looked through my records and sure enough, I hadn't paid it.
For what, for which year?
Uh, twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four.
And I got a notice in twenty twenty-five for this upcoming year.
Okay.
Um, so I said, I, I can't believe that, you know, I wouldn't have ignored notices from you all. We've always paid for ten years, why would I get that? Um, I was not of zero sympathy or options, and told I owed seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. To renew for two years, which included a two hundred and eighty-eight dollar late fee for a two hundred and forty dollar permit. Because it had gone twelve years, or twelve months, because I didn't, that's not something you think about every month, and since I did not receive notices, I didn't pay it. Um, so I think my biggest issue is I've researched fees first around the counties. We do a lot of work in surrounding counties, and our fees are way out of whack. Um, our contractor fee as a general contractor is two hundred and forty dollars, and Lexington is a hundred. Lexington has a max late fee of forty dollars, Winchester has ten percent into eternity. So that's how my fee ended up being, much more than my actual license. A lot of surrounding counties that we work in offer partial contractor, uh, licenses, because we work in multiple counties. Winchester gives no option for that. Our fees are the highest, which doesn't make sense to me, because we're also paying subcontractors who should have licenses. We also pay for permits when we do jobs like we're supposed to. There are lots in town that don't, we've called on it, and it's been zero help. Um, we've seen our competitors working with no permits called, and they say there's nothing they can do about it. So I'm not sure what the. So I'm not sure what the incentive is to do like we are. Pull permits, do what we're supposed to, make sure the things we're building are safe. Um, I think that it poses a large challenge for small businesses to let it pile up for twelve months. I wouldn't have skipped it. I did not receive a notice. I don't know why, and I know they're not required to send a renewal notice. They want me to just think of that every April and send it in. Unfortunately, I didn't. Um, so in April, we made the, the decision to not work in Winchester anymore, the city of Winchester. And my husband is hands down one of the best contractors in Winchester. And I think that does a disservice to the city, because now you've got people out there that are still doing the work without licenses and not paying for permits. And then you don't have a one to try and do what's right. Um, I, I, I will not pay two hundred and eighty-eight dollars in a late fee. I'm just not, I just, and that, so then there's occupational tax that we're losing, which is also higher than most surrounding counties. Um, and I just would ask that, that maybe that permits be looked at again. Um, I think it should have a maximum, except Lexington had the maximum fee of forty dollars, period. So if you miss it and twelve months goes by, you owe forty dollars, which seems much more reasonable to me. I also think we should have, um, some kind of part-time option for contractors that work. We, we don't have a building in the city and we just work here. We work in Lexington, we work in Richmond. So I don't, I think, I think two hundred and forty dollars is a lot anyway, just like we do for the other counties. Um, I think there needs to be a better way of sending the notices. Um, they emailed me three notices that they had sent me, one from Mr. Dyckman, which wasn't signed. I did not receive that. I would not have ignored that. There's no reason for me to ignore that. We've always paid that. Um, they insisted they sent it. I insisted they didn't, didn't, and so here we are, and now my fees are just continuing to pile up. I'm happy to pay last year's fee. I understand that, I should, you know, that was missed. And I'm happy to pay this year's fee, but the two hundred and eighty-eight dollars in late fees for people who are trying to do what they're supposed to is way out a little. I'm having a little trouble. I also noticed I did a records request um, over the past year, Winchester's collected almost ten thousand dollars in late fees from people in business licenses, and I think that's a bit much to be charging. Again, people who are trying to do what they're supposed to and paying for their licenses and it just seemed way out of whack to me. That number seemed high. And when I called, I was told I was twelve months of late fees within April. Well, May is a grace period. It says that on all the paperwork. And I pointed that out to them and they said, oh, you're right. So they dropped mine down twenty-four dollars. But when I did the records request, I could see that lots of businesses have been charged that extra month, and I think that needs to be researched and refunded after they were miscalculated by.
Are you writing down her suggestions? Okay. Anything else? Mr. Dyckman, do you have anything you need to add or want to add or?
No, it's just, it's what's been in the ordinance for, penalties have been in the ordinance for many years. And, and as this lady pointed out, it's not a requirement that of the ordinance that notices be sent out. It's kind of a courtesy thing that the city does.
Okay. City manager, anything?
Yes, I'd just like to say that actually, um, we have started looking at all the fee structures. Part of that we've already seen because we were looking at the parking fee structures. So we're doing a comprehensive review of that and we're in the middle of that and that's still ongoing. So we are reviewing all of our fees.
Well, I, I think the penalty and part needs to be looked at too, because it's like last year, the mail was late. I had a six dollar and ninety-nine cent Discover Card bill. The mail slowed down and I got a twenty-nine dollar late fee on six dollar and ninety-nine cents.
Again, they're not required to give you notice, but it's not something you just think about. So if you don't think about it for twelve months, and now I've got more late fees than my license, and mine will continue to build up because I just were busy enough. And now Winchester belongs to a contractor.
So if I understood you right, correct me if I'm wrong here, I was trying to write down, twenty twenty-four, you did not pay your license fee. And you're willing to pay your license fee.
I'm not willing to pay twelve months and in the ten percent late fee, that's not more than the original.
And this.
Write a check for four hundred and eighty dollars today to catch me up, but I will not pay the two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. I'm still working with the city.
Per city submission, we've never been playing.
Yeah, I received an email that said, oh yeah, we see you've paid for ten years. You've been, you know, in business here for that long. And I said, I mean, why would I skip, renotice it? That just, it's one of those things I have.
Yeah.
I'm doing payroll, I'm doing all these things, and it flipped my mind. I was never intentionally nor renoted this. And I was met with, we absolutely sent you those. There's no way. You just didn't pay it. And I said, that is not, that's not after it. And I, again, I understand it's a courtesy. But if I don't think of it in April, I'm not going to think of it until the next April and now if you're.
Yeah.
Alicia, anything?
I'm nobody.
Okay. I, I want to say just a couple of things. I'm getting, hearing all this, trying to take it all in. Um, we do have an awful, a very good business office here. And I know that this has probably gotten too far, that it really shouldn't have gotten with anybody. Um, so I'm gonna make a motion that we go ahead and waive the, um, late fee. If you will go ahead and pay your four hundred and eighty, I think you said today, and then put a post-it note on your head to remind you next year to come back and get your license.
It's like, yeah, I'll pay about it, but it's forty dollars. It's not more than that.
Uh, we can't vote on this today because this is a special.
Always special call.
But, but we can ask Joy to put it on the agenda for the next regular meeting.
If you will, go ahead and pay them. And the next meeting will know that you're. Okay. Alicia, are you okay with that? Okay. I just don't, you know, we, we try to run a good ship here.
That's what I would say.
And.
Yeah.
And it's hard and this one works day and night and.
Do you have any suggestion?
Yes.
Would it be possible for you to send the commission a letter with regards to that information?
I can send what I have.
Just send it.
Mr. Dyckman? That, take care of it.
Yeah.
Alicia, are you okay with that? Okay.
I'll pleasure the commission.
And I know we've done this before on different things where some, somebody last one I can, or, or remember, they owed like three years in property taxes. And they paid the taxes and we waived the penalty. But we couldn't pay, we, we can't legally.
Can't with.
We can't waive the taxes and we can't waive the interest on the taxes.
Correct.
But there's a legislator over, over there.
Well, I think, I think getting higher than the actual.
Right. Well, well, like I said, you, you know.
People pay it because it's annoying to come do this and have to, but I, I, I just feels not doing that.
And all I ask is we all treat each other with respect and do what we need to do and we will help you as you're going to help us, so.
And we're looking at ordinances. And that's why Bill said the orders have been that white bill since the seventies. Is that what you said?
I think so.
And you will review that, correct?
True.
Okay.
Well, one suggestion I would make that if they don't pay their business license fee in April or May, by the middle of June, we, then we send them a letter and say, your, your bill hadn't been paid.
We do.
Well, they do, they do, they.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not kind of the point right now, so.
Okay.
They do, they sent me a copy of three letters they said they sent, which they may have sent, like you said, the mail was that I've had other issues with things coming and we may not have bought them, but.
Well.
I just got my neighbor's mail in my mailbox last night, so.
I was not going to let, we, we are receipt and they.
But please trust our business office. They are good and they know what they're doing and let's just.
I think they would. I, I will say that I'm sure they're doing a great job, but.
They did. So, we guess.
Yep. Uh, if I may, I want to tread lightly. I, I agree with Ms. Fuller in looking at the ordinance and adjusting.
Yeah.
Um, I, I would consider revising the ordinance and having whatever that fee percentage reflected to the late payment. Not in a, not that I don't think one way or another about waiving it, but I think about the repercussions that come after doing that for other entities that have paid it. Thanks.
Okay. We'll just put it on the agenda for the next meeting and.
Yes, ma'am.
You go ahead and pay your bill if you will, and then we'll take it from there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, comments for, oh, sorry, Adam.
Um, I'm going to double win because I, I, this guy, I didn't realize the legislature here got similar lines. Supposed to tell you to tell the legislative things. Uh, I had heard the legislature voting by dropping income tax, but I will remind everybody that that's at the cost of expanding the sales abuse tax. And we as small businessmen just have to administrate that. Which in order to what she was just saying, it means incurring more expenses and I would love to see the gratitude of the legislature by coming up with legislation that helps reduce the cost of running small businesses.
There's your Senator telling.
Who's the small businessman himself?
Yes, for reducing the tax, but for instance, it's possible as far as administrative that could be stated.
Okay, did you get that, Senator?
Yeah.
Did you miss it?
I did, I did.
Um, if I'm correct me when I'm wrong, you guys are reducing income tax, but we're looking to withstand self abuse tax?
Not yet. I expect it will, I expect that the tax will change. You're going to have to have some factor. So I would anticipate it becoming.
I know as far as trades are concerned, now labor is, uh, back. So, uh, H V S E contractors, plumbers, all those are now charging sales tax on their labor to cover for the income tax reduction. For, so if we're going to administrate those taxes for you all, looking for other mechanisms to reduce the cost of doing business.
We're always looking for mechanisms to reduce the cost of small business.
That would be my, my own plan, when, uh, because we're talking about licensing being pretty easy here, so. Yeah. Jump on, I've got a whole list for the legislature, but they.
Exchange phone number.
Yeah, it's, it's a good list. It's all about making money with this. Um, I do want to, I wanted to say thank you. I'm in a weird camp about our downtown project right now. As far as I want to be the biggest winner, but I also have a lot, a lot of stick in the game, if that makes sense. Uh, so my, my concerns are a little bit different as far as some of the others that you heard, but I, I do want to say thank you. I asked you to grab, I just, I, everybody in this room this week. And I got a visit from the sleeping in dream there. I talked to Shannon, I talked to Hannah, I talked to Mike, I talked to Jesse, I talked to everybody. And I will say that the one thing I do know is very fortunate, we have a great contract at the student project. I have, I have bothered those guys beyond belief. I've been out there. I'm known as the hanger man on the corner. Um, so I, I really appreciate that. I'm the plumber for work. I'm a problem. It's being sorted. Everybody knows we found a problem, it's being sorted. Uh, but I did want to bring up a couple of points so that everybody has the important notices and things that I'm trying to do, and it might help them understand why I get frustrated. And then I'm sure other people get frustrated for different reasons. Um, I think everybody in the room knows we offer paid for street trees. Um, that's something that we're going to do. Last, that I visited, uh, Jesse and I were waiting on what the setbacks need to be from state highway as far as planting those trees on the low side. I said our company would pay for it, figure out the cost. Uh, I was waiting on Joy to get back with me as far as how we do that, so later the law, I don't want to break the law, but I have a product. So, uh, I think that we can probably figure out how to do it right, but I want to do it the right way. So street trees are on the radar. Please don't pay the trees. At one point there was a conversation against you to sneak that in. We're going to take care of it. It's not a big deal. With Dr. Down, with Dr. Jesse, with Dr. Mike. So that'd be done as soon as Joy will tell me what I need to submit to her, we can do that. But I want to let you know I did have a conversation with Joy three weeks ago, two weeks ago. We were running out of time. Again, we get up to this time wall, it's going like the corner up here. What are we going to do? What are we going to do? What are we going to do? And the outcome is getting late to dig it, almost too late to fix the problem. And they get to the other side of the road. I don't know what we need to do with the street trees or like home type of emissions I need to, then I get panicked, I get frustrated with that. I'm not, I'm not, I can't do this project. What do I do? And I call my wife, put her on the phone and I saw, I said, well, I don't know what you do. I'll just make you do the job. And, and then those are the kinds of things that get me really agitated and frustrating. So street trees. Let you all know, I'm going to plant street trees. If you want to chop them down, you can chop them down. It's up to you, but I think we're going to get eight trees in total going from Lexington Avenue to Broadway. And unfortunately, the courthouse is going to have to pay for their own trees, but uh, we're going to do the, in front of buildings, the building owners are excited. Everybody's pitching in in different ways. It's going to be great. The other one in regards to the corner of Lexington Avenue and Main Street, I've told everybody, we're willing to look at cost sharing so that we can enhance the high side project. We can just a little bit so that we put in some of our money to help your all's project go a little bit further than where it was at before. I know that Palmer is working on how we might do that and things like that right now, but I need to let you guys know that that is a legitimate offer. It's not something that we can forget about or wait too late, like take, take our money and let's do the project like the street trees. Let's not be disorganized and not make it happen. I'm going to give you guys money to do these things. But it takes a certain measure of cooperation, but also follow through. Need the follow through. I ask, how do we do this? How do I do it the right way? I don't know how to do it from the government side. I know how to get a hold of the tree in the ground, but I don't know how to do it without breaking the law, so please help me so I can give you my money.
So, Mr. Dyckman, will you work with the city clerk?
I was supposed to look up some information for him and it's been a rough couple of weeks.
Understand.
Personally, so I haven't gotten it to you, but I will get it to you tomorrow.
I just, I won't.
We'll let Mr. Dyckman review it and be sure things legalized.
And so that when we're working to do their trees, um, I'll be patient with what we did and then go ahead and knock out their trees. So we can figure out how to do it now. I just want to, I want to do the things the right way. I want to do the.
Thank you.
The sidewalk project. Then when you hear about the anger mound corner, it's because I have made, I've been trying to do it the right way and calling, planning, zoning. I've been, I harassed Jesse every day. I had to bring some donuts yesterday, but that's okay.
So, to ask a question and clarify, the corner of Maine and Lexington, are you speaking about the ADA ramp?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I, everybody correct me when I'm absolutely wrong, but I've been transparency, I elevated room levels, I believe in being overly transparent. Um, it was my opinion back in November that there was a big mistake made on the corner and I tried to do it very passively by making suggestions to win me. Like to make our projects outside, but the time clock kept ticking and I finally criticized that. I don't think they're super dense, fantastic. He really, um, helped me understand what I thought I knew. And yet there was a small design work, we would call it that much. It happens. It's a construction problem. There, there was nobody, no big, a big issue, but we needed to make some changes. And in the middle of that, there is an opportunity to get what I would consider a serious improvement to the high side project, a very little inconvenience. We just need to tweak the plan a little bit. Um, and we're going to have to do ADA accessibility all the way down the high side. And I know that they're working on that. I got to be a part of a very educated, very learned meeting. I appreciated that. I think there was like three engineers present and everybody was giving the work. Um, well, I'm impressed if we can do it great. If we can't do it great, the mayor knows what we're talking about. There's a lot of potentials, but they're just potential threatening. So, yeah, ADA accessibility is on how we improve that. Um, and then I would, I would like to extend a decent stay for the project all the way to the corner of our property line on Lexington Avenue. If we can do it, we may not be able to. Um, so those are the questions. I'm Mike, uh, Palmer and Chris Down Company, Jesse, uh, have been trying to figure out, I'm sure. I'll be the first one to decide. I didn't know what they have up there. Uh, but I do appreciate you guys coming out. Already my intolerable attitude sometimes. Um, and I, I want to send more note to the treatment, the sidewalk and whatever. I will forewarn you, the different group of downtown individuals are getting frustrated. I know that they asked for a list of something. I've not been a part of all of it concessions, but it's something like that. They had a specific ask. Um, and they are still waiting for a clear concession response to what, and it'd be like after a month with no real response, uh, with all of them on that.
Who did that go to?
I think it was brought, I think it was brought up at the last business meeting, the business owners meeting, and I think it's in relation to, um, so that, and it was, Chad, John Palmer was at the meeting. Uh, they, they prepared a list of, can we waive business license fees and things like that? What I know is that the, the pool get on the outside right now, but, uh, I was, I did ask them how, how things would go as far as negotiating some of those, if there were any little financial.
And I'll say, we did have a response to that.
Oh, really?
We did, yeah.
Is that the one we just went through the other day and gave responses to everything?
Um, yes, that was brought up in that meeting. There was follow-up and, um, I had Whitney communicate that back to the Downtown Business Association meeting on Monday.
Do you mind to share that? Because my, my suspicion is that, like you need to, that there are several different groups that don't communicate well with each other. Do you mind to communicate what they can expect? Uh, so that I can then share it outwards to people. I'm, I'm on team city on this one. If we can do separate, we can't, yeah. But what, what were those concessions or what were those?
Right now, the, uh, business license fees, occupational tax. Right now, the, uh, business license fees, occupational tax, things like that, we are not legally able to waive those fees. Uh, we consulted with city attorney and, um, that's just not an option right now, and I know a lot of people thought, and the feedback I got was, well, you did that during COVID. Well, that was special circumstances that came down from the state that said we could do it during that time, but those don't exist anymore, so. Uh, you can't just evade taxes or anything like that.
Did you not get a copy of what the city was sent? Can you provide that?
I got a copy of what was sent to the city from the person that said it, I didn't get a copy of the response.
It, it was verbal, th- there was nothing written.
It probably needs to be written out.
You just want a list of the questions too, right?
Just the answers to the questions, but I, so that I could, I wasn't, I wasn't in a meeting, I didn't reply any questions you're asked or the man about. I realized that this is a sidewalk project, it's the days, that was gonna happen now or ten years from now, or should it happen thirty years ago? And my, there's an episode of the group that says it what it is, um, I, I will also remind anybody that's listening or in the room that like. Uh, I have all answers to the construction questions that I want, but it's because I'm not straight asking questions of people, so I would encourage my viewers to do the same thing. Jesse, I guess that's why Brian and I said, then I sprint one side to the other, answering questions and doing the best that you can, so. But I do, I do know that, that there are some people that haven't heard that verbal response.
Yeah.
Dr. Manley, can you provide that?
We'll provide it.
Whitney, could you send out again, maybe on your email or on your text?
Listen, if not, I guess there's no blame or whatever, just want to share everybody's opinion, hey, listen.
Sure.
But if people have any questions or whatnot, and I will, I've talked with you about the son, of course, she's working on it. There are some opportunities to come up with some more creative ramp options that aren't necessarily writing line checks to business owners. One thing that she and I have talked about is a, I got a logo, I can give one gift card program for retail businesses. Where they have the opportunity to sell, uh, a gift card, they turn it and have received a new one. And they essentially double the value the city receptive, the other half of that, there's lots of different creative ways that we look about supporting the businesses that aren't. Your two thousand dollar check, two thousand dollar check, I don't worry, this is expeditiously possible to evaluate, any of those ideas in the Bible. Because the likelihood that they go to the other side of the high side, uh, all of them sell ten times more profit, probably really unlikely. Uh, will they ever recoup these sales losses? Probably answer to no, um, so if we can help them with any things, small mechanisms. Um, it'll help us save as many businesses as we can.
We'll take a look and see what we can legally do about all those issues, so.
And sit right there, if though we can do it, surely there's gotta be some mechanism safe place for future projects.
For future.
I know that when we were on front lawn of the youth in Lexington, there weren't any mechanisms available to businesses there, so they filed action lawsuits and they won. Um, so to avoid those kinds of situations, surely it's safe for instance mechanisms that would allow persons consideration to small businesses, so that we don't have to.
Well, Adam, beer cheese money, we committed, how much did we commit, Whitney?
Uh, we had to commit a certain amount, yeah.
But it was in, and some of that was gonna go for marketing, but some of that could maybe go for this, what Adam's talking about.
Obviously, any creative, creative solutions, I, I've never been a big explorer of the right end of that project, um, solutions that I've never seen solve problems, I mean. But if there's some way we can get customer engagement, gift card programs, anything like that, um.
Do you have a list of your ideas?
Um, I can send it to Whitney, the big one that keeps sort of going back, but we know community did and worked through COVID was that if I won't get one, but the city supplemented. If you bought a hundred dollar gift card, you turn, you give the customer two hundred dollars in gift cards, you turn your receipt into the city as a business owner and they reimbursed you out of that. So the city bought a half a gift card, the business paper had a gift card, but there.
But the customer paid for half of it.
The customer wins, and it's, it's spoiled, that's what it is, it's two hundred dollars in the business owner, owner's own cash flow, we have.
What I'm saying, some of that beer cheese money could maybe go for that app.
If, if that's legal.
I'd have to see.
We'll have to, let, we'll let Mr. Dykman take a look, see what we legally can do without going to the pokey ourselves, so.
It's like, I think we're, Ken and I have talked about this, but we wait a whole, a lot longer before we, before it's too late, um, so it's expeditiously.
Send whatever it is you want us to take a look at to Whitney and we'll look at it.
I do today, and then there's the other group of people that was due, like I said, I'm on that, I'm on the outside, the, the cool kids club right now. Uh, and I'm all in on this project, anywhere we can help financially, physically, intellectually, but there's much more people need working on it. Uh, I do believe we just have to survive it, um, that there's gonna be bumps along the way, and I'm gonna be one of those bumps and. Um, Carrie might be another one of those bumps, and then there might be actual construction bumps, but, uh, I do believe it is a good project, um. I do believe that Golden Road is a good project, and I'm excited to see you gotta get the bullwhip out on that one here soon, um. So let's, uh, be anything we can do together, please, um, as quickly as possible, because we're on a tight time.
And while you're here, while you're here, would you briefly just talk about your project real quickly, what works, what's gonna happen on that corner?
So a year's worth of anguish and financial sacrifice, I'll be a hundred percent honest, we were egotistical and naive, which I can humbly admit now. We probably shouldn't have also come down the building next to the one that they did the knowledge. That it was at a total loss point, we, we've spent, but seen enough money just trying to salvage the structure. But it could drive home, which I did not want to admit that it was lost, but we did it, um, there. You've been inside, there's nothing left, we're about to put new concrete. Anyways, it'll last another hundred years, where we're at with the project is we expect that sometime when you deal with a high side project with lower story space. It's already on a lease, it will be occupied, we're very excited to see them move in, they're very excited. That their parts and pieces slowly delivered, um, our concrete trucks, uh, Grace the Allen Country will be coming out on Tuesday before. And the big truck schedule, gun before concrete, uh, the apartments on the upper story, we have on property a total of five residential spaces. Totaling four two hundred square feet total, uh, these are gonna be apartments like Winchester you've never seen before, um, very excited about it.
Right.
I got a little competitive with another project that's going on in town, um, but when we kind of went all in at a certain point, a building's that rough. If you're gonna rebuild it back, you might as well do a good job with it, and so that's where we got to. Uh, those apartments are actually almost finished, um, we have had, just like everybody, one construction delay after another. Uh, if you think I bother you all in chair, my phone calls, conduct utilities, the waylers, um, but they have gone re커d the alley for us because they didn't have enough capacity on the alley. Um, at, when we get to a certain good point where your project, city project is, is, is at us or past us. We'll open those apartments up, we'll really get serious about the lower story and get them moved in, uh, and right now our project cost, um. Lexington, she made me feel important, it's nice, our project cost is gonna be somewhere around five billion.
That's awesome. Uh, great investment.
I hope so, if we, we won't make any comment on this one, I said this with a, I'm all gonna say, it's a good learning lesson for other people, uh, down the road. We're gonna get a hustle on the rest of these buildings, uh, I'm, I'm fearful for what they have to come, so I encourage anybody. Do it, do it now, it's only getting worse, um, but yes, it's a future investment, about two years from now. I keep going, the ratio is going, we're hanging over, uh, that will be working. But it's a very exciting project, it's gonna be a front facing business, uh, it'll be lively, it'll be right there when you come to town. That's what I'm always gonna work with the high side group, that's why I want two projects to go inside and work well together. As far as we come into town, well, modest town, you know, people that stop for a second, I'm rich, but I want people to pay attention and see it and be excited that I'm coming into downtown. No walking mirrors, no crazy, yeah, no crazy, no crazy, it's very upscale, very nice, sophisticated project. We're gonna have trees incorporated into that empty space, uh, as far as how much access to the general public coming and going, we've got a gradient issue. If we want to have level ground, there's gonna have to start sort of fencing railing, there's people falling into a lot. Still a lot of obstacles, but once again, I finally got. Everybody on the high side group to understand what we were trying to do and everybody's working well together now, they can do the numbers that I'm.
And is it my understanding that there eventually will be a place to sit down and eat there?
That, that is the plan I have been given, there's also serious discussion about, uh, sort of outdoor music.
And outdoor trees and some benches and tables or?
A little stage at, and my, my goal is we, I want people to go out and come to town. Uh, so we don't make money on this one, I'll be splitting the bulk for the rest of the property values in town. Uh, it's just so far the property, do that, um, or if I say we're gonna look at all ends we can on that. That's why I'm extra razzlebeazled, uh, we've got group similar to what contractor clearly saying, we, we have a lot, you know, we're paying that much in our cost. Lots of contractors that pay license fees and paying in the facts, uh, there's a lot, there's a big boost to be a little over common here. I mean, yeah, these are all contractors that you guys know that will make the research, they're minds. It's a little small business, but we're, 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 we're gonna get in on it to then break.
All right, appreciate your support, appreciate your investment.
Appreciate your patience, so, understanding. And yes, I want to, I want to feel a little more confident, I'll be a lawyer to let your business eventually too.
Uh, we have. Senator Alkins will be willing to talk to you anytime, so.
We are always, small businesses is everyone's.
Sure, sure, thank you, I appreciate you.
I would like to clarify the all my opinions ahead on city business, uh. We got it immediately, about taxes, there are good points, if that one, good chance, so, thanks for telling me that. The biggest discussion was that since my dinner party just ended, the beer cheese money available for some political. And we were actually tasked with driving the plan, what we do with that, say those, those are real business or whatever, so. Change, it was a meeting, uh, probably that happened, but we didn't put all here, you would be able to play else on wood, and you know, that money about that, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, uh, we are now to comments from the mayor, commissioner, city major and city attorney, Commissioner Stroud, do you have anything?
I would just, um, like to say, Adam, thank you so much for what you're doing for downtown, I think we've had some new investors that have come in here. That I'm so impressed with and thank God they love our community and love what our town's gonna be and on the way to being. Um, I'd like to give a shout out to, um, Jayla Doyle and the inmate program yesterday, we started at nine o'clock in the morning. And did all the flowers and it took us a long time, but just because this one block is down, you still want to decorate the rest of your town, so, um. They look very nice and the baskets will be delivered right before beer cheese, so it was a good day and.
Thank you for you spending your entire day doing that, so.
I love it and they're, they're the best working group we've got in this community, I'm gonna get them out a can for beer cheese, so, they're wonderful. And I'm not gonna be here for the memorial service and I'm so sorry, Memorial Day, because it sounds like a very nice service.
And Diana's worked hard on it.
Yeah, I hate to miss it, but.
Anything else?
Oh, no, I guess that's all.
Okay, Commissioner Cox?
Nothing.
Commissioner Tool?
Um, congratulations to the graduates tomorrow.
Good point, good point though, thank you for doing that, uh, Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, I appreciate Senator's update, that was, that was very helpful, learned a lot of stuff that I was writing it down as quick as you were saying it, but.
City Major?
Yes, uh, Mayor, I just want to, um, say a few things, um, regarding grants. AP Martin is doing a great job right now, she's, uh, researching and, um, applying for several grants. She keeps telling me about, um, a grant she's applying for, it's called the Grant Program, and every time she says a grant program. I'm like, which program is this again, but it's actually an acronym, it's the Government Resource Accelerating Needed Transformation. And it's gonna be a grant that we're gonna apply for that actually matches, um, or helps us provide the matching funds on other grants that we get. So, um, we're gonna be applying for that and hopefully we can recoup some of our money that we've already got grants on, and then the portion that we pay, we can get a grant on that.
Senator, did that come out of House Bill one?
No, that was, that was one of the House Bill, that was a bit ago, but I don't remember the number on it now, to my notes, but it, that pretty stress that what that came forward. Now, what we, we amended, that was, I think, back to the twenty twenty three maybe, but we amended it this year to allow whoever do totals on it, that's what.
Yeah, great.
It's a great program, and it, it, it is a grant program, I, as you were, I've heard it, I was a few.
Six oh five.
Six oh five.
Right.
House Bill six.
House Bill six oh five.
And to my knowledge, I, to my knowledge, I don't think the city's ever, uh, been awarded one of these grant grants, so.
A grant.
So, uh, that's great, I appreciate that, um, I also want to, um, uh, let everyone know my regrets about Carrie, Carrie's supported me, helped me. Uh, since she's been here, uh, been a fantastic HR director and I'm sorry to see her go, but I am celebrating her next, uh, career and we appreciate that, so it's exciting time for her. And I'm always here, uh, to help encourage people to go to the next level of their professional development and that's what Carrie's doing, so. Uh, thank you, Carrie, and then, um, I just want to echo your comments, Mayor, that our business office is a great team, they provide great services. And, um, I think they, uh, handle a lot and, um, you know, I couldn't ask for a finer, uh, department, uh, to help manage all that they do. Um, so they are good, I would caution you just a little bit, I think it might open up the door, um, if we do look at waiving, uh, the late fees and everything. Um, I do have some concerns about that and, um, uh, I'll be, um, probably giving my opinion on that for the next agenda meeting. Uh, and what we can do working with city attorney, what we can and can't do, uh, but I do want to say that we do have a great business office.
Thank you, anything else?
No.
Okay, um, I have been asked to mention tonight, this Saturday morning, whatever kind of day it is right now. But, uh, our women, see if I get this right, John, our women's bass team or our women's bass fishing team are on their way soon to Oklahoma, to the Nationals. Uh, we have two ladies, young ladies at the high school that are, uh, participating in that and they need to raise five thousand dollars quickly. So if anybody's here and wants to help them catch a fish, uh, be sure, and John Paul, do you have their contact information and everything? Okay, so I was asked to, to please share that and, um, Carrie, once again, you will be missed. And, uh, so we are now getting ready to go into our budget session, we'll be here for hours. So, uh, anybody want to take a break?
Yes.
Let's take a break.
Oh, can I say one more thing, uh, about the Memorial Day service on Monday at eleven AM, that is a fundraiser for the veterans' memorials, so.
Hamburger five dollars with chips and water, okay, does someone else need to speak back here?
They're over here.
They're here for the budget work.
Oh, the budget work. This, we'll be here. Okay, let's take a break.
Take a break.
In seconds, motion. Let's just take a break.
Yeah. I'm gonna make a cup of coffee, turn the phone, and all the things.